Good evening, everyone. Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. The date is Monday, March 4, 2024, and the time is 5:00 P.M. We will start this meeting off, as we do all of our meetings, with a moment of silence, Madam President, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible).
I will go over our rules of civility and decorum that govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and shall not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, anyone desiring to speak shall complete a comment card for each agenda item the person wishes to address, and they should complete that card to include the person's full name, address, and the number of agenda item, and the card should be completed and delivered prior to that item coming up on the agenda. Thank you very much, and now we will turn to the agenda. Ms. Johnson, are there any additions, lesions, reorganization of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. First order of business, item 6.1, proclaiming March 2024 as Florida Bicycle Month. This proclamation will be accepted by Kevin Valbrecht, who is the Director of Engineering Services, Jessica Keller, who is a Mobility and Transportation Manager, Alex Hansen, City Comprehensive Planner, Bernard Harrigan, Outreach Coordinator, WPB Go Mobility Coalition, and Rafael Clemente, Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority. The proclamation, according, what will basically say, "The State of Florida designates March as Bicycle Month, and Palm Beach County will recognize it locally. The City of West Palm Beach residents and visitors engage in bicycling as a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of physical activity and recreation. Florida Bicycle Month features several fitness opportunities, educational programs, races, commuting, and charity events for riders of all ages and abilities to enjoy throughout the month at various parks and locations throughout Palm Beach County. The recognition of Florida Bicycle Month aims to raise awareness of bicycling and ultimately encourage physical activity and a healthy lifestyle by elevating bicycling as a more widely accepted choice of transportation. The Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency plays a crucial role in making bicycling more accessible and safer through its project planning and community education efforts. The City of West Palm Beach has an ever-expanding designated or enhanced bicycle lane network and planned facilities to create a safe, connected system of bicycle infrastructure." I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Florida Bicycle Month. You all come down, we'll give you the proclamation. Wow, nice. Don't let it block the proclamation. Is this up right now?
It is.
Okay. All right, is that it? Okay, anybody want to say a few words?
Of course.
Who's going to take this? It's yours.
We will take it.
Okay, say a few words, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, City Administrator, City Attorney, and City Clerk. My name is Jessica Keller. This is the first time that I've stood before you after joining the team in May, and I wanted the TPA to say a few words before I speak. Valentina?
Thank you, Jessica. Good mor- or good afternoon, everyone. My name is Valentina Ficus. I'm with the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, and I'm honored here today to accept this proclamation on behalf of the TPA. The City will actually be joining other municipalities in this effort, so congratulations and thank you, Mayor James, and Commission members, or Commission members, for this effort. With this proclamation, the Commission, or the City, will be joining other municipalities and will be raising awareness for bicycle safety to promote a healthier and more sustainable mode of transportation. So, thank you, everyone.
I asked her to speak because I'm looking forward to the day that we don't have to have Bicycle Month any longer. I'm looking forward to the day that we fully integrate a multimodal transportation system, and we don't need to raise awareness, because it's just part of our everyday living. But until then, this week is Florida Bicycle, well, this week is West Palm Beach Bicycle Week, and today we kicked off a Bike Valet service that is sponsored by WPB Go. We have representatives here today. We also had a bike tune-up station that was supported by Tri-Rail at the Tri-Rail Station, which really surprised me, the number of people that turned out. We had residents turn out, but we also had commuters as well, and maybe it's something in the future that we can routinely provide to our commuters and residents here in the city. We will also have Bike to Work Day this Friday outside of City Hall, where we will be providing information to everyone who comes in, whether you ride your bike or walk to work or drive your car, so that, and we'll be providing some refreshments thanks to the DDA. Thank you.
I remember a few years ago, you want, have something else you want to say?
Commissioner Fox has something that she wants to say.
I was just going to say that there's another bicycle ride hosted by Jessica on Wednesday night, starting at Solento at 5:30 P.M., this Wednesday.
Very good, very good. A few years ago, before I became a mayor, the TPA, and I believe the City had something to do with it, sponsored a Bike to Work, and I actually bicycled with a group of people from the Tri-Rail facility in Mangonia Park. When were you, you were with us then, you remember that? We rode, and Rafael rode all the way from Mangonia Park here to City Hall. That was the last time I biked to work. It was fun, it was fun. Okay, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege, and a good friend of mine, a good friend of ours, a good friend of the city's, quite frankly, passed away a few weeks ago, Bill Jacobson. I'm going to be presenting to his widow at his memorial service on Wednesday, a proclamation paying tribute to Bill, but I did want to read the text of the tribute proclamation into the record at tonight's meeting, so bear with me. William Paul Jacobson was born in 1946 and passed away on February 16, 2024. Bill, a native of New York, grew up and loved, and lived as a fourth-generation Staten Islander. Bill graduated from Brooklyn Technical High School in 1964, Ohio Wesleyan University in 1968, and graduated with a law degree from Ohio Northern University in 1972. Having spent two years in the military and as a Palm Beach County legal veteran, Bill began his career as Assistant County Attorney, carving a distinguished 50-year path in real estate, zoning, and land development law. Beyond his legal practice, Bill was an active member of the Downtown Development Authority, having also served in the City of West Palm Beach Planning, on the City of West Palm Beach Planning Board, the City's Affordable Housing Commission, and the City's Nominating Advisory Committee. Bill was a community entrepreneur, developing and spearheading the popular West Palm Beach antique market for over a decade, held every Saturday alongside the green market, a fixture in the local community. As a former race driver, Bill traveled the world following NASCAR. A lifelong New York Knicks, Mets, and Giants sports fan, evidencing that he was not perfect. That was not in the proclamation, that was, Bill would appreciate that. Bill enjoyed snow skiing, fly fishing, travel, and antique hunting. More than anything, Bill loved his family and cherished time spent with his grandson and grandnieces. I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby pay tribute to William Paul Jacobson, a beloved community leader, for his love of life, his love for his family, and his commitment to the citizens of West Palm Beach. He was a great man. All right, we'll now turn back, return to the agenda, Consent Item, Consent Calendar, Item 7.1 through 7.3. Commissioners, do we have any questions, comments on consent? Item 7.1 through 7.3. Do we have any cards? Hearing no comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Consent Calendar, Items 7.1 through 7.3, as presented.
Second.
It's moved to the second, a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion passed, unanimous. Thank you. Item 8.1, Resolution Number 63-24-F, approving the use of general fund discretionary fund balance in amount of $272,500 for the first payment of the $1.09 million settlement to the Photographic Center. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Mayor, Commissioners, Fay Johnson, City Administrator for the City of West Palm Beach, as the Mayor indicated, if approved, this resolution, 6324-F, will appropriate the $272,500 to enable the City to make the first payment toward that $1,090,000 settlement. The balance of the settlement agreement amount of $817,500 will be included in the FY25 budget. The first payment has to be made before or on March 31, 2023. I would like to note that back in June of 2023, when the Board approved the settlement amount, we did not bring the F resolution at that time, which is customary. Therefore, we're bringing it at this point in order to physically move the money out of the discretionary fund balance into the operating budget. With that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I approve, I move approval of Resolution Number 63-24-F.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second, a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5071-23 for Approval of a City-Initiated Evaluation and Appraisal Review, EAR, Based Amendments to Multiple Elements into the MAP Series of the City's Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Alex Hansen, City's Comprehensive Planner with the City's Planning Division. Again, this is the second reading of Ordinance 5071-23, the EAR, or Evaluation and Appraisal Review. Just a quick reminder, the EAR is a state-mandated process. Florida statutes require every municipality in the state to evaluate and then process any amendments to their respective comprehensive plans if the municipality deems that they're needed. We started our process about a year and a half ago. There's a number of state-mandated deadlines associated with the EAR process. We comply with all of these deadlines. Quick reminder, we have 13 elements in the City's Comprehensive Plan dealing with a multitude of issues. Nine of those 13 elements are being revised as part of this process. In addition, we also have 26 maps in the Comprehensive Plan, dealing with issues such as infrastructure, transportation, natural resources. We are updating all of those maps, all 26 maps. Again, we went over a lot of detail as to what the amendments entail at the first reading. I'm not, I'm not going to go over that again. I do want to remind the Board about the timelines. As I indicated earlier, the process started actually in 2022. Then, we worked more deeply with different departments and agencies on the development of the changes in the first half of 2023. Then, we had the first reading on November 13 of last year. This complied with the state-mandated deadline of November 29 for transmittal of the amendments. Because the EAR requires being an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to be sent to the state, we transmitted the amendments in November. There was also a 60-day review period for both the state, this is the Florida Department of Commerce, as well as a number of other agencies, regional and statewide agencies, to do the review. They completed the review. We did have a couple of comments with regards to our amendments. The first one was a letter that we received from Palm Beach County, in which they suggested to the City a couple of changes. One pertained, and it may be difficult to read in the slide, but the first set of changes was for us to remove the Traffic Concurrent Exception Area, or TCEA, from downtown. We do not recommend for us to do this. This would basically provide total control of traffic for Palm Beach County and downtown West Palm Beach. We do not think that this is a good idea. The second suggestion was for the City to include some policies in our transportation element that would basically recommend the review of providing for a pedestrian bridge, an elevated bridge over Okeechobee Boulevard, or a pedestrian tunnel. That is not something that we think is advisable, so we are not making any of those changes. We also received some comments from FDOT. The FDOT comments basically indicated that they wanted for us to include the State Road 7 extension in our city transportation maps. I want to point out, the City has not included the State Road 7 extension in our Comprehensive Plan maps for a number of years now, so it's not a change that we just included as part of this process. Again, given the City's concerns about this, this project, we are not recommending to place the State Road 7 extension in our transportation maps. I want to point out that this past January, specifically in January 18, the Florida Department of Commerce, or Floria Commerce, sent a letter to Mayor James, indicated that they had reviewed all the amendments, and in accordance to the statutes, had not identified any objections or comments to the proposed amendments. So, again, the state indicated that we had made all of the statutory requirements for these amendments. I do want to highlight, there's three minor changes that we are making since the transmittal hearing in November. They were clarifying a policy with regards to workforce housing. We're indicating basically that the requirements for downtown for workforce housing are still valid. Second, we are also replacing a reference to the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Palm Beach Transportation Agency. And finally, we are correcting, this was something that we should have done in November, we need to tweak some of the parameters for our workforce housing guidelines, to change it from 140 of the average median income to 120 percent. With all of that, staff has recommended approval of Ordinance 5071-23. This is based on the fact that the amendments meet Chapter 163 of the statutes, amid all other statutory requirements, and also are consistent with the different elements of the City's Comprehensive Plan. This ends my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just want to observe and thank you for standing strong and resisting EPTA's attempt to include the State Road 7 extension in this document, as well as resisting the efforts of the county to add pedestrian overpass and to remove the transportation concurrency exception. Thank you for that. Any questions, comments, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with your statement, and I would, that was going to be my question. I just wanted to understand better about those letters, were they unsolicited letters that we received, or is it, were we required to get their approval in any way for the county?
Both Palm Beach County, as well as FDOT, are part of the reviewers for any amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, so as I indicated, after transmittal, we send it to the state, to Floria Commerce, as well as to seven other reviewers. They include FDOT and Palm Beach County. I presume also Palm Beach County could have submitted it on their own, even if they had not been a reviewer of this, as part of what is called the I-PAC process, Intergovernmental Plan Amendment Review Committee, which is a county-wide review process for compliance amendments. But again, they responded to the amendments, but Floria Commerce decided that their requests or comments did not need to reach their level of review, and basically, they sided with us in this, in this matter. They indicated that whatever we were proposing complied with the statutes.
And we did not need their approval?
Not, not FDOTs or the counties, we did need the approval of Floria Commerce, and we received that in January.
Yes, thank you. President Warren?
Can you go back to the slide that shows the AMI, please? I'd just like to review that again.
And this was a change that, just to indicate, that our housing department had suggested for transmittal, it was something that we inadvertently omitted from the transmittal packet.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance Number 5071-23 and direct submittal of the adopted amendments of the State Land Planning Agency. This recommendation is based on the findings that these proposed amendments meet Chapter 163, Florida statutes, and all other appropriate Florida statutory requirements, and are consistent with the different elements of the City's Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second, a discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5071-23, An Ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the introduction and administration element, future land use element, transportation element, housing element, utilities element, recreation and open space element, historic preservation element, capital improvements element, downtown master plan element, and the MAP series, MAP series of the Comprehensive Plan, based on the evaluation and appraisal review, EAR, process of the Comprehensive Plan, stating the intent of the City Commission to amend the Comprehensive Plan in accordance with Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing a conflicts clause and a separability clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Item 9.2, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5090-24, Adopting the City of West Palm Beach Amendments to the Florida Building Code, 8th Edition, 2023, Chapter 1, Administration. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. City Commissioner Robert Brown, building official, City of West Palm Beach, here presenting the second reading for the ordinance for the adoption of the Chapter 1 amendments for the Florida Building Code. There are no changes since the first reading. I'll just go briefly through what we talked about before. The Florida Building Code is a three-year cycle, that the Florida Building Commission adopts a new Florida Building Code, and jurisdictions are authorized to adopt amendments to Chapter 1, which are the administrative, which is the administrative chapter of the Florida Building Code. The majority of jurisdictions do adopt Chapter 1 amendments, as it helps them to administer the, the Building Code and keep everyone on the same page. I'm a board member for the Building Code Advisory Board of Palm Beach County, and the Board put out recommendations for the jurisdictions to use to adopt for their Chapter 1 amendments. We, the City of West Palm Beach, the Department, have incorporated those recommendations, as well as maintaining the Chapter 1 amendments that were previous, in our previous version, so we've just basically merged those together for consistency. The main, main items that, items of note would be for assisting property owners with the, closing out of their expired permits for property sales, et cetera. And so, we have laid out the, the assistance that we can provide there. We also have specific reference to drainage plans, as we've had a lot of inquiries from property owners regarding keeping stormwater from draining from one property to another. And then, as we, as we know, condominium and cooperative buildings are required to have a milestone structural inspection for safety reasons, and the outline for that is laid out as well in Chapter 1 amendments. So, we have those items incorporated in the Chapter 1 amendments that we are proposing. So, for the second reading, staff recommendation is for approval of the amendment, for approval of the, of the ordinance to adopt the Chapter 1 amendments, and I'd like to take any questions, if you have any.
Very good, thank you, sir, for that presentation. Any questions, comments for staff? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance Number 5090-24 on second reading.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second, a discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5090-24, An Ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the code of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 2, Building Code, Section 18-32, City Amendments Adopted, adopting by reference the amendments to the Florida Building Code, 8th Edition, 2023, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, a codification clause, an effective date, and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item 9.3, Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance Number 5082-24, dissolving the Golf Commission Dependent Special District. Sir Chet?
Nancy Yurchek, Deputy City Attorney. This ordinance dissolves the, it will amend the City Code to dissolve the Golf Commission Special District and the Golf Course Advisory Committee. For many years, the, the City Commission has sat as the, as the Golf Commission. Part of that was the reason because the prior operator agreement was with the Golf Commission and not the City. Under our new agreement, and at least with the West Palm Golf Community Trust, that agreement is with the City and under the oversight of the City Commission. So, they're coming, they're going to report to the City Commission, come to the City Commission for, for decision. So, the Golf Course Dependent Special District is really duplicative, no longer really serves any public purpose, and special districts, the City has to report annually to the state. We have to provide administrative reports, some administrative fees, and it's sort of just administrative process that really no longer serves any public purpose. Additionally, the Golf Course Advisory Committee was also set up many years ago when the Golf Commission was not the City Commission. Those, those functions have also now really been assumed under our new agreement with the Golf Course Community Trust, and the City has representation on that board to do these functions that the Golf Course Advisory Committee had done previously. So, again, no longer serves a purpose, seems duplicative to remain on the books, so staff is recommending approval of Ordinance 5082-24 at first reading. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Yurchek. Not directly related to this matter, but I didn't know you would be here, but I attended a board meeting of the, the trust, as, in my capacity as mayor, and I wanted to pass along, they were very complimentary of you.
Thank you.
In, in terms of the hard work that you put in to get the lease done with them, so I wanted to state that publicly, that your efforts were very much appreciated, even, even by the trust, and I'm sure the negotiations were not always rainbows and sherpits, but anyway.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, you represented the City very well, and they were very complimentary of your efforts, so.
Appreciate the recognition.
I just want to say that to you publicly.
Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners, on this item? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Ms. Yerchak. Appreciate the update. And I just wanted to confirm that we're dissolving this entity, the entity that you described because we're already providing the services needed and the oversight needed of the golf course. And that is through the new operating agreement that
Right.
Enlists the board to come to the city commission.
The city commission. And we have representatives on the, on the foundation's trust. So yes, all those functions have been assumed under the new agreement.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, just for the record, the city has two seats on the board, which are occupied by me as mayor and the city administrator. So we attend the board meetings and, and any big decisions, obviously, we'll come back to the full commission. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve ordinance number 5082-24 on first reading.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second at discussion. Hearing none. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5082-24, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, dissolving the Golf Commission Dependent Special District, dissolving the Golf Course Advisory Committee, deleting Article 4 Golf of Chapter 58, Parks and Recreation Facilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, providing for codification, providing for separability and conflict, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Yerchak. Item 9.4, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5093-24, to increase the number of regular committee members appointed to the Education Advisory Committee from nine to 15.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Kimberly Rothenberg, City Attorney, here to present this evening, ordinance number 5093-24. The ordinance is before you because of a request from the advisory committee who sits currently. They believe that the additional six members that they're requesting is necessary so that the mayor has the ability to appoint members that will better reflect the entire community. They ask that we bring this forward, and we did. The committee was created by ordinance in order to change its membership. We have to amend the ordinance. It simply changes the number nine to 15. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Very good. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Any questions for, yes, Commissioner Peduzzi?
I didn't read the background on this, so I'll ask you. The members, I know that in other boards, they're representative of all the districts in the community. And then usually, the mayor also has one or two appointments. How is that going to be handled in this case with increasing the number this much? Are there still representatives from each of the commission districts who live in those commission districts? And then the mayor has additional appointments? Do you know?
The, the six, I'll tell you, the six additional members that are being appointed are all appointed by the mayor.
By the mayor.
And in order to see how the original nine were appointed, I would have to look back at the ordinance itself. But this ordinance doesn't change anything except the number from nine to 15.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this item? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. You may have just said you don't have this information with you.
Oh, I, I can. If I get back to my computer, I'll give you the exact, the full ordinance. But in, with the paperwork I brought down here, I don't have it. So if you, I'll go back to the podium.
Okay. I'll just say my question, in case this is slightly different from Commissioner Peduzzi's, is I was just curious if the original six positions or nine had any regulations as to, I know sometimes we require teachers or students, and I was just wondering if you could outline that.
I can partially answer while she's, oh.
Bear with me for one moment.
I can partially answer, Mayor, while she's looking.
You have a question?
No, I, I can, I can partially answer because I'm the liaison.
Okay.
So right now, there's, there's three students that represent different schools. And then there's a made up of teachers and staff that are related to the teaching profession on there, the specifics of which are in the ordinance. But we do have three student members at this moment.
Okay. And I do have the membership composition at this time. So it's composed of your nine regular members and one alternate. They're appointed by the mayor for a term of two years. And so all members were appointed by the mayor. The qualifications are three members are high school students in their junior year. The Education Advisory Committee represents education, neighborhood associations, local business, community organizations. They serve without compensation. And there is no other specifics that I see relating to the composition.
Is that the end of your answer? Yes?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry about that, Mayor.
Follow up? Okay. Commissioner Ward?
Yes, I just want to say, just to give background on it, I think that from observing the committee, they wanted, there's a lot of people in the education space, whether it's not-for-profit teachers, small businesses that want to get involved, as well as other not-for-profits that provide educational programming. And so in discussion, that was where it was, we wanted all hands on deck to be able to provide a more holistic approach to trying to solve some of the objectives of the committee. And that's where this, this came about from.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 5093-24 on first reading and schedule second reading for March 18th, 2024.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Removed in second? Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5093-24, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Division 2, Education Advisory Committee, Section 2-77, Composition, Appointment, Terms, Increasing the Number of Committee Members, Providing for Codifications, Providing for Separability, Providing for Conflicts, and Providing for an Effective Date.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now it's time to turn to comments from the public. We have one card, Fiona Rawls.
Thank you, Mayor James. Great to be here. Fiona Rawls, 39527th Street. Great haircut, Mayor James. I just wanted to tell Commissioner Fox and Commissioner Ward, congratulations on your unopposed victories. And while I'm standing here in front of the dream team, it's not lost on me that Commissioner Lambert's seat is being threatened tonight. So I promised her that I would use my voice to speak up about Matthew Lusanio, a beige carpet head of face, am I right? Matthew Lusanio isn't a, a good council person. And you can just judge that by his comments, saying that he doesn't want to build a building with affordable housing because he doesn't want this place to look like Brooklyn. I personally like Brooklyn, and I don't know why Matthew Lusanio hates America and hates great American cities. So yeah, that's just what I wanted to say about that. Now, I came for a good idea, Mayor James. I wanted to give you something you could capitalize on. I know that you're good friends with Michael Bloomberg, who's really into grayscale Bitcoin. And I had a great idea that might help, help out a big allot. So what we have is, you know, buildings, our cityscape. Well, those buildings are ready-made towers for vertical-axis wind turbines. Now, if we create a green, a green energy network within our city, we can help, we can help with the production of the blockchain. We can be a city that creates cryptocurrency by providing renewable energy with grid tie inverters specifically for the purpose of mining digital currency. So that's just something to keep, keep in the back of your mind. It could end up being a really big thing. So thank you so much, everybody. I hope you have a wonderful night.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the only card we have. We will now turn to comments from the members of the dais. We'll begin with you, President Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that I'm excited about a groundbreaking that I attended on February 26th for Legacy at 45th Street. It was very well attended by many members of the city staff, by members of the county staff, county commissioners. And it is, Palm Beach County Housing Authority is launching a three-apartment building, complex of 48 one- and two-bedroom units, made from repurposed steel shipping containers. These shipping containers are cost-effective and unique. And this project is targeting families at or below 80% AMI. Eligibility will be reserved for those making at or less than $51,000 a year. I'm very excited about this. I think that this is forward-thinking, is innovative. I'm hopeful that this project will be the first of many similar to it that will allow affordable housing that we need in our county, throughout our county. And this is starting right here in our great city of West Palm Beach. And I just want to say that I'm looking forward to this and that there were so many different agencies that came together in support of this initiative. March is Women's, Women's History Month. Every year in March, Women's History Month is designated by Presidential Proclamation to highlight the contributions of women to events in history and contemporary society. Women's History Month is celebrated not only in the United States, but in the United Kingdom and Australia. President Jimmy Carter, very own President Jimmy Carter, has issued the first Presidential Proclamation declaring the week of March 8th, 1980, as National Women's History Week. And that, of course, was the beginning of what we're now celebrating throughout the month of March. International Women's Day is a global holiday celebrated annually on March 8th as a focal point in women's rights movement, gender equality, reproductive rights, and violence and abuse against women. And I'd just like to say that we've seen a lot of exciting things happen in the city of West Palm Beach in the last month. And if I look at the last week, I vote that the mayor had the best week ever, and I'm not going to steal any of the shine of the great things that have happened in the last week, but I do think that you get the ribbon for best week and best month ever, Mayor, for all of the great things that have happened.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, we had a roundtable at the TPA that was hosted by the TPA, but we invited the elected officials and partners from Broward and Miami Dade Counties to discuss their funding options for transportation and how they are able to fund and plan and implement all their different projects. And they have either a half cent or a penny, a half cent or a full penny sales tax devoted to transportation in both of those counties. And so that funds buses that run every 10 minutes. It funds commuter rail, light rail, municipal circulators, on-demand services, and just a lot of options that help people get to the jobs and to the grocery store and to all their other essentials that, you know, they don't have to rely on cars so much. And so I think when we look at bigger cities and I think the public transportation, it's rooted in the convenience that you have to give people a reason to get out of your car, whether it's, you're going to get there faster, or it's going to be less expensive, it's going to be easier access to where you live and those kinds of things. And, you know, when I look at what has happened in the past few years in West Palm Beach, we are benefiting from all these people that want to come and live in our city and our county from other places that they might be used to using public transportation almost exclusively. And, you know, we aren't built for that right now. And so you might have heard that last week, the county commission in Palm Beach County, they have decided to sunset our penny tax that should be expiring at the end of 2025. And they will be looking to add to the 2026 ballot an initiative asking for a penny tax towards transportation. And I know that we'll all be probably discussing this a lot over the next two years and hearing a lot more about it. But it's just really impressive when you hear from colleagues in Broward and Miami what they've been able to do with their penny tax that's devoted exclusively to transportation. And I think there are smaller cities in our county, you know, that have really relied on the infrastructure penny, from the penny tax. And that's not lost on me. But I think also it's going to, you know, having a penny tax for transportation is going to benefit every corner of our county. And I'm really excited about it. I think this is only going to be great for economic development. We're going to be able to look at TODs, you know, popping up in areas that we would never have considered because this transportation is, will be accessible for people to get around easier. So I just wanted to put that on everyone's radar, and I know you might have read the Post article about it. But it was just really exciting for us at the TPA, who we've been talking about it for a long time and not sure that this would actually come to fruition. So last week, also, I attended with the TPA in Miami, the Safe Streets Summit, that is hosted every year by one of the MPOs in our region. And so next year, it will actually be our turn. So it will be one day of sort of a convention-style event, and then one day of onsite tours. So it's something for us to start thinking about. It will be hosted by the TPA, but it will be happening in West Palm Beach. So it's a great chance for us to show off all of our safe streets and our complete streets to our colleagues that are elected officials, you know, down south. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. I too want to say happy Women's History Month. And I thought that our city team did a fantastic job of celebrating it off with the incredible Daisy Emily Butler Lyman, who was blazed a trail as West Palm Beach's first teacher, leaving an indelible mark on our city's educational history. And so they, the city provided a background on her, which was very nice. And so happy Women's History Month, and I'm happy to celebrate it with all of you. And the only announcement that I have tonight is that their police meeting is back to its regularly scheduled timing on the second Wednesday of the month. So it'll be next Wednesday, the 13th, 6:30 at Gaines Park. Thank you.
Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate Pastor Jeff and Alan Gast of Gast Construction, and especially Grace Fellowship, that's on Okeechobee Boulevard in District 4, on their topping ceremony that I had the pleasure of attending this afternoon. They are adding 17,000, over 17,000 square feet of classrooms, activity rooms, offices, and additional parking that will serve not only their congregation, but the surrounding community. So congratulations to them. And on, for those of you who can't get enough of, of planning and other type of activities, March 15th, there's a joint meeting of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council and the South Florida Regional Planning Council. And together, they're comprised of seven counties in our area. That meeting's going to be held right here in our city at the TPA offices, 9:30 in the morning on March 15th. And all are welcome to come. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. A few of us were able to attend an event for Vida Nova, which is a wonderful organization in our community that helps reduce homelessness for our foster youth. And I know that homeless situations are always top of mind here along this dais and in our city. And just wanted to share with you a stunning fact that nationally, 50% of the homeless population in our country have spent time in foster care. And so I just encourage those of you listening to get involved with organizations that help foster care and wanted to commend this dais and city for the work that we do with Vida Nova. I know we recently had them in our chambers as we were partnering with them on a housing project. Also, a great program that's helping to serve our youth, the, we, as the mayor mentioned, the golf park, related to the item that we had earlier. I had a chance to attend Family Fun Night on Friday night at the golf park, and actually, it's just called The Park. But if you haven't attended, I encourage everybody to go on a Friday night. There's plenty to do for those of you who might not have small children, but if you do have small children, there's even more to do. They actually have a teacher who's on staff there throughout the evening doing activities. They have hamburgers and hot dogs, and the restaurant is open. It was everything that the residents asked for when we first started visioning what this park would look like. And I know that many years ago, when we had to make the very difficult decision to close the park and to start working on a new plan, that many residents spoke up and said, I want to make sure that when we build it back, that it has this element. And I am just so proud to say that it does. And I am just so proud to say that it does. I know that The PATH, which is the program serving our youth and local students and local residents there, is serving 70 students. And that these programs aren't selected by the, I'm sorry, the students that participate aren't hand-selected by the board. They are hand-selected by the teachers who really know their students and know which students need this extra support. And so I'm really proud to see that those programs taking off. Thank you for mentioning the importance of voting. I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that Thursday, March 7th, that's this Thursday, is the deadline to request your vote-by-mail ballot. And that early voting is March 9th through March 17th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And Election Day, if you want to vote on Election Day, is Tuesday, March 19th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And if you're not familiar with your voting location or you want to go and request your vote-by-mail ballot, you can do so at votepalmbeach.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And yes, I was going to talk about Election Day as well. The only tweak I would make to what you said is that early voting will be at Gaines Park, which is 1501 North Australian Avenue. Again, March 9th through Sunday, March 17th. Early voting can be accomplished at Gaines Park Community Center, 1501 North Australian Avenue. There are also two referendum questions on the ballot. The first is whether or not to increase the residency period required for election officials to run for office from six months to 12 months. Our current charter has a six-month residency requirement. So the question is whether the six-month period should be increased to a 12-month period. The second question relates to outside employment and limiting business relationships. The charter requires, the current charter requires the mayor to devote full-time to city duties, but does not otherwise limit outside employment or business relationships. The question to the voters is, should the charter be amended to prohibit the mayor from having outside employment and limit holding a financial interest in any business entity to interests that would not impair the mayor's independent judgment or conflict with the performance of city duties? So if you're voting, do not forget to weigh in on the two referenda. Commissioner, I just want to also give a slight tweak to what you said about the park. The students that go to The PATH are selected by the principals of the school. And again, they are the ones who know the students with most need. But the match at the park was incredibly successful. It was a week ago, probably around this time, where many of us were congregating at the park. $3.5 million was raised for the foundation as a result of the match. It was a rousing success. A little bit of background, most golf courses that host The MATCH tend to pay TNT or Time Warner. They pay money to host The MATCH. But through the leaders of the foundation and their relationships, they were able to negotiate that those, the owners of The MATCH would be paying The Park for the opportunity. So that's a pretty sweet deal. So again, the $3.5 million were added to the coffers of the foundation that owns and operates the golf park. And that will, for the most part, go for the benefit of the children, 77, as you said, Commissioner, that are participating in The PATH. And I believe it's in June or July, Ms. Johnson, when the foundation will be reporting to the City Commission and the mayor at a workshop, I believe. Correct?
It's actually May.
May, even sooner than I thought. So stay tuned, because they have some tremendous numbers to report to us. There are some, a number of events that are going on to celebrate Florida Bicycle Month. I think it was mentioned that today, we offered free bike safety checks with minor adjustments at the Tri-Rail Station. We mentioned the night bike ride, which will happen on Wednesday, March 6th. March 8th is Bike to Work Day. All of these events are open to the public. And participants of all ages and skill levels are invited to join. And last but not least, on Sunday, March 10th, believe it or not, we will go back to daylight savings time, which will begin at 2:00 a.m. And that's just nine days before the start of spring. Remember to set your clocks forward one hour, which will provide us an extra hour of sunshine at the end of the day. You might also want to take advantage of this opportunity to change the batteries in your smoke alarms and your CO2 directors. And that is all I have. Good night, everyone, and God bless the city of West Palm Beach. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.